Hello, everyone. My name is Alisa Barrett. I'm the Executive Director of the Western Justice Center. And we are very honored to be in a multi-year partnership with Pasadena Unified to bring conflict resolution education to all 23 schools in the district. And as part of our partnership, when we heard from Dr. Blanco this really wonderful work to create listening conversations with parents and other stakeholders in the district, we wanted to offer our humble abode to host. So I'm going to introduce Dr. Blanco, although I don't think she needs introduction. Dr. Blanco has been appointed the interim superintendent. She served with PUSD for a total of nine years, mainly as the deputy superintendent. She has actually been a leader in education for 30 years and comes out of a deep commitment that has included special education, instruction, and mediation. So, very blessed. She's also played a lead role in the district's visioning work that led to the creation of this strategic plan. So, without further ado, Dr. Elizabeth Blanco.
Good evening. I want to thank everyone for taking time out of your day to be here this evening for the conversation. The conversation is a casual conversation where we really do want to hear from all of you about what you see, the strengths of PUSD are, the challenges, and then your recommendations for strategies for improvement. So, the 100-day plan came out of a dissertation that I wrote about superintendency as one of the theories of what you would do when you went into an organization as a new leader. And so I thought, well, I have this opportunity now on the interim to try out the theory and see if it really works. So, so far, I would say it's been pretty amazing for me and my leadership team. We do have some of them with us here this evening. If you're on the PUSD leadership team wave. Wait, okay. And then we also have a board president, Michelle Richardson Bailey, here with us. Patrice McKenzie. Appreciate your support. And many of my supporters who have heard me talk about this before. So, thank you for being here, too. Tonight's experience is going to be a little bit different because we're going to actually work in one of the processes that the Western Justice Association has been cheering with, sharing with our students. We had the opportunity to have all of our leaders trained this summer in peer mediation. And that's something that we are going to launch in our secondary schools. We've also been working with them in restorative practices. And a new endeavor that we're thinking about taking on is mediation with some of their experienced mediators to mediate disputes that we have maybe in special education or other areas at the lowest level and really get resolution from, you know, some support from the outside. So, as I've been traveling around our schools, there's been some common themes that have come up. Compensation for our employees is a big one. Facilities and work that we need to do to create our schools to be, you know, better learning environments for our students. And Mr. Carrasco, our Director of Maintenance and Operations, just came in. And he's been coming to a lot of the schools with me and just really, you know, fixing things right away after we meet with them. There are some of the needs that will go into a longer-term plan. The idea behind the Listening and Learning Tour and getting this assessment is so that we can have the information that we gather to develop the implementation plans for our strategic plan. So, last year, many of you participated in our design teams. And the design teams created the pillars, the directives, for the strategic plan. And then on your tables tonight, or if you picked it up, there is a new, a card that has our new vision and mission and value statements that our board adopted in June with our strategic pillars and directives. And so, the plan, the 100-day plan, of course, is not the strategic plan. The strategic plan is going to take us five years to implement, but the strategic initiatives that we're starting this year are part of the 100-day plan. So, a couple of other assessments that we're looking at is some audits that were commissioned in the past and now the implementation of them. One is with our Assistive Technology Department and our Curriculum Department. We've done two curriculum audits, one in reading and one in math. We've made some major changes to our delivery of English language development and English language arts as a result of that. And then organizational efficiencies. So, we really are looking at how business practices work and how HR and business work together. So, all of those are improvements that we are hoping to have a more efficient organization and really have our students have opportunities to be proficient and do the things that, you know, make them really successful. Another emerging theme that's come up, and I heard it again this evening from someone who introduced themselves to me, is how many people that work in the Pasadena Unified are committed and have been here intergenerationally. And what I mean by that is that they've been here 25, 30, 40 years. They talk about their families that have gone to school here before them, the schools they've graduated from, and the schools they work at, right? And many of our employees, well, 52% of them, live outside the district boundaries. And they bring their children to work with them every day. So, that says a lot about who we are as a community, who we are as an organization. We can get better, right? We always can get better. And we're striving through continuous improvement models and networks to strengthen what we have. But I think that, you know, Pasadena is definitely a great place to be. We offer a private education at a public school price. And I say that with sincerity because I've had the opportunity to work in Covina Valley as a principal, a role in Unified as a director and a teacher. And Denise Whitaker is a teacher. And those are districts that are similar to our size. And they do not have the programs or opportunities or community partners that Pasadena has. So, this is truly a wonderful place to educate children and receive any of the services and supports that you need. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to the facilitator that's going to talk about what we're going to do next. I think we're now going to go to a little Q&amp;A portion. Do you want to sit in there and I'll pass? So, I forgot to mention that on your card, there's a QR code that you can scan with your phone and you can give feedback electronically. If you come from another organization, please share the QR code. You can pick up extra cards on your way out if you like. And we're going to keep that open for a while, even though we are coming to, you know, the end of the 100-day visits. One of our employees made a great suggestion and said, "Well, why don't we have a QR code like this all the time where we can give you consistent feedback on a regular basis?" So, we're going to check that option out because we think that's a really good idea. So, feel free to raise your hand, wave, and we can call on you to answer any questions you might have.
I have a question. So, oh, sorry. So, with the 100-day plan and then the five-year strategic plan, I just wanted to find out, like, how is that going to get implemented if, you know, we know that there is a superintendent search? So, I just wanted to know, will that carry on?
Well, I certainly hope so. I don't think any superintendent would last too long if they came into our community and wanted to just not pay attention to all the work that's been done for a year or our community partners. So, this is the plan that's been developed by all of you, approved by the board. And if it's not me, they'll have to make it their plan.
Thank you. This may be definitely my second, possibly my third strategic plan process. I did the first one with Benty when I was an employee. What is different? What will be different with sustainability? And as a community member and parent, how will I find nexus to what is here, to what my student is experiencing on campus?
Well, our strategic planning process is aligned to our LCAP. We have a great opportunity, right? We just finished the strategic plan, the educational master plan, the facilities master plan, all in the same year. And we're going to be rewriting the LCAP so we'll be able to direct funds towards the new directives that are, you know, pillars that are outlined in the plan. And we do also have, you know, a team of implementers. We've created a group, a council, that includes as many parents, classified employees, teachers, as administrators to really level the playing field and honor the culture of with. A few years ago, some of our academics team and a few partners went to Hullett, opportunity to write a big grant to really create a culture of with. We were not awarded that grant. But when we went into the strategic planning process and started working on the 100-day plan, we said, "What an opportunity, right? To be able to do what we had a vision for even though we didn't get the funding." So, hopefully, you'll see that difference and hear that from, you know, the people who work at the schools. So, the through line starts with the larger strategic plan than the LCAP. Then we have department plans and individual school plans. And so, you should be able to see that all the way through the organization.
Dr. Blanco, what has PUSD done in the past to try and recapture the kids who have gone to private schools and left the district to try and bring them back into the fold? And it doesn't appear to me, to whatever has happened in the past, to be working. And I'm hoping there's a plan moving forward that's different than what's been done in the past to bring those kids back and show them that actually PUSD does give a private school education for free.
Well, I think there's been a lot of progress made in that area. So, overall, the entire San Gabriel Valley is declining. And your table was talking about MIER as an example. So, we're a three-time magnet recipient of federal magnet grants because of the work and outcomes that we're able to produce. So, when I returned to the district, MIER had about 700 students. Now, they're up to 1,100 students, right? In that short time. That's because of the opportunities that magnet has provided, right? And the premise behind magnet isn't so much about bringing children from somewhere else. It's about serving the students we have in a different way through socioeconomic integration. Because a lot of research shows that when children with needs are going to school with children that have other opportunities, achievement raises, parent voices come out, and you get a better outcome. And the magnets, the magnet schools, national magnet schools, have seen us be able to achieve that. The first time I was here, we were in school closures, too. And we were talking about closing Altadena and Jackson. Both of those schools have a waiting list now because of their magnet programs. So, I, you know, we cannot totally shift the decline of the San Gabriel Valley, lower birth rates, the expense of California. But one of the things we did learn in the facilities master plan is that the average school district only captures about 70% of the population's school age. Now, you know, we're capturing 48% because we have more private schools per capita. So, I don't know if it's so much about convincing, you know, people to come back because there are a lot of legacy private schools here, right? It's family heritage and history like UCLA and USC. So, I'm not sure that we will ever change the minds of, you know, something that's important culturally to your family and your family's history. There are probably, you know, some opportunities where people may have left the district because of safety reasons or, you know, feeling that things were not working right the way they want. And that's why we're working with the Western Justice Center to really have safety, restorative, peer mediation on all of our campuses. So, I do think that, you know, we are a hidden gem and that, you know, people, when they visit our schools, they always say, "I wish I would have known." When people come to work here, they always say, "Oh, I wish I would have known." But I do believe that we have great things for the students that are here. And by word of mouth is what makes people come to a school, right? When they start off in pre-K, so we've increased TK enrollment. The last time I looked, we had like 167 new students from outside the district in TK. Another area was growing the Armenian cultural program at Blair as part of the IB program. We are one of the only, well, we are the only IB program in the United States that has the Armenian language as world language for international baccalaureate. So, that's something that we do have a large population of Armenian community in Pasadena that are coming back. We have students coming from 17 different school districts to that program right now. So, we are, we have a lot of good strategies, right? That can attract people from other school districts. Because we have dual immersion and IB, they can leave their other school districts and come to us. So, although we might not capture every family within the Pasadena boundaries for a variety of reasons, we certainly are attractive to parents that come and work in the district and want to bring their children to work with them.
Anyone else have a question?
Dr. Blanco, I was excited to see the start of this school year because there are a lot of new members on your team, administrative team, this year. I have a student who spoke to me recently about the microaggressions that she experienced, he, he experienced, and I just made that mistake, that he experiences in having to correct just the pronoun that he prefers. And I've seen some things on campuses recently that have me concerned. This young student was talking to me about safety. How do they know that they feel safe on campus? And I'm having a hard, or I've had a hard time answering them those questions. My biggest concern was that in previous administrations, we saw a reserve grow almost tenfold to $85 million that's not being spent on our students or our employees. The latest offer to our employees was 5% below the cost of living increase that the state of California is giving the district, which says to me again that although our five-year plan says we are student-centered and employee-supportive, we are not intending to give our employees the ability to survive the recent cost of living increases or pass it forward. My question to you is, when students are facing fiberglass in pools, when they are going home early from school for heat stroke or facing microaggressions, that I'm really glad to see LA versus hate bring up and where we're at today. When they're facing all those things, how do I know that this administration's going to be different than any previous administration that has gotten us to this point over the last decade or so? And I question that the decisions made over the last few months, if it's not about funding, since we have so much money in reserves, then is it about will or is it about intent?
So, I think a lot of the money we have in the reserve is one-time money from ESSER. So, ESSER has a lot of restrictions in terms of capital projects. So, we have to send money, we send in plans on how we're going to use the money. And some of those plans have been rejected. We did quite a few summer projects on roofs, shade coverings, air conditioning repairs over the summer, right? So, you mentioned, like, how did it take this long to get in this condition? We're not going to just pull out of this condition overnight. We did give the largest raise, compensation that our employees deserved last year, 10% than in many years. We are required to look at our budgets three years out. If you remember, a while ago, we weren't able to meet the third year out and we were going to be taken over by the county. And that's when the voters came together, the community of Pasadena, and passed Measure J. So, a large amount of that reserve that you see is part of Measure J, which the first priority, if you read the ballot and the language, is that we want to have a reserve. So, the board has also, you know, over many years, wanted to make sure that we're never in situations that we've been in with consolidating schools and not being able to give teachers raises to have a good, a good reserve. So, a lot of that money is one-time money that has restrictions on the money. So, even though it appears that there's more money than ever before, there's really not. I know that all of us, the administration and our Board of Education, is committed to giving steady compensation increases to make sure that we fix our salary schedules, which have been way below other districts. So, that's not going to happen overnight either. But the consequence of giving raises that we can't afford will be cutting all the programs and things that mean so much to the community. So, we're trying to balance that. And, you know, each group is their own negotiating group. But we have to look at the district as a whole and we have to look at all of the employees, right? Having fair compensation. So, I am hoping that, you know, we will work through this together and, you know, come out with the employees really feeling like that we value them because we do. What I can say, what you'll see different in this administration is it's not a full administration of all chiefs, right? We have assistant supes and directors on the Assistant Superintendent's Leadership Team. And, you know, we do that intentionally so we can have some of our staff that's closer to the ground and we can get more information as opposed to just having all executives.
Yes, Dr. Blanco. You mentioned that Measure J, the funds from there, are part of the asserts? If I said that correctly, asserts funds?
Part of the, no. ESSER funds were given to us for the federal government during the pandemic.
Okay.
So, part of the reserve is ESSER funding that has limited uses, right? So, when you're talking about, "Why couldn't you fix all the buildings and do some of the things that we needed to do?" It takes a federal-level approval. And some of the federal-level approvals that we submitted were rejected. And Measure J, we're using to make sure that we maintain our reserve because when Measure J was passed, we were not demonstrating that we were going to be solvent the third year out because we turned in our budget for three years. And you really have to look at the fourth year, too, because it's not just about the three years. And so, that money is really the money that's the foundation for making sure that we have the reserve that's required by the state. Anytime that you go below that reserve in the second or third year of your budget, you will be required to create a fiscal stabilization plan, which results in cutting things, right? Taking things away. So, a part of what's, you know, happened over the years is when we have gone into those fiscal stabilization modes, it really does hurt our reputation. It hurts, you know, the discourse throughout the community. And the good things get kind of drowned out by the need to have to try to bring our budget back in line. So, that's what we want to be sure doesn't happen again.
So, those are two separate funds that have restrictions by themselves separately. Where does this lot of money come in? I mean, does Pasadena Unified School District get an annual something from the state of California?
Yeah, the lot of money is not, it's not a lot of money. It is some money that comes to school districts, but it's really not what the community and public thinks comes, right? So, maybe that might cover a couple of small things that is unrestricted money, but it's not a large amount.
Like 200,000 maybe, or am I, what's?
I would have to look at the exact amount. I don't want to give you wrong information. But in relatively to the rest of the budget, it's a very small amount.
Any other questions?
Hi. First, I want to say thank you for your service. I know it's not an easy job. So, my son goes to MIER High School. He's a water polo player. He's been ingesting the fiberglass. His pool, MIER Pool, has been closed. And so, now that he's swimming in the PHS pool. I want to know if the PHS pool has been tested or has the Blair pool been tested? Because I don't want Blair children ingesting fiberglass. I don't want PHS children ingesting fiberglass. I want to know if those schools' waters were tested.
So, we have been testing all of the pools on a regular basis. And one of the unfortunate circumstances at MIER is that they don't have run, hot-running water. So, students are not able to take showers when they get out of the pool. And that has been prioritized already for Measure O. And we're starting already to work with the architects. And there'll be a new pool built at MIER, a new athletic facility. That's been a board priority. So, the repair work that will be done temporarily to the MIER pool is, you know, resurfacing. And we've done that on a regular basis with our pools. The resurfacing only lasts a couple of years. And depending on how old what the resurfacing is, it can even deteriorate faster. So, we are working on repairing the MIER pool right away with a temporary fix. But PHS was done, was it done over the summer, Mr. Carrasco?
Oh, seven in May.
Done in May with the resurfacing. And Blair is also in need of that, right?
Yes, of course.
And when are they scheduled for Blair?
We're planning to jump on the John MIER pool and Blair pool concurrently within the next couple of weeks.
So, is the Blair's pool closed as well?
No, currently, it's not closed. But there has been a need for resurfacing that pool.
Do you want to talk about the test? We had it tested a couple of weeks ago, right?
Yes, that's correct. We, we test the pool. And we also service the pool through our third-party, our third-party contractor. They, they do come service all of our pools multiple times a week. And testing for, for pH levels, chemical composition, things of that nature are, are done during those visits.
Okay. If those are done during those visits, so they've been tested regularly and all of a sudden, within a week's time, the water has changed to be to the point where the pool will be closed down by the state, by the City of Pasadena Health Department? That happened in one week? So, is there a measure so frequently? That's hard for me to believe.
We do have a filtration system in each of the pools, even though we haven't, we have had some issues with fiberglass. We do have a filtration system. They're serviced. Unfortunately, this week, that pool at John MIER was shut down by the city health department.
We did repair the Blair filter over the summer, too. So, they have a more up-to-date filtration system. But if, and was mentioned earlier about the air conditioning, we really did have a heat plan this year. We tried to get ahead of the heat with ordering swamp coolers and more fans. And then we had places where the air conditioning just started breaking, like right when we opened school. And so, the team, you know, could not keep up with the demands. We even bought units that were not industrial standards, right? Because we knew that our teachers really needed to be cooled off. So, we're working with very old buildings. The repairs, after we did all the evaluations and the modernization plans with Measure J. and the modernization plans with Measure O, are about $1.6 billion. And we have a $500 million bond. So there's many more needs than resources, even though we passed a $500 million bond. So we are, you know, surveying right now to see what, you know, the voter threshold is to pass another bond on the presidential election. And we're very fortunate that the residents in Pasadena have been very supportive, right, of our schools. But it is very hard if you own any old homes in the area, you know, that they take a lot of work. It's not just like our alarm systems. There's been concerns about the cameras and safety was also mentioned earlier. The cameras aren't where we can just plug and play and bring a new camera and plug it into the old system. There's wiring that has to be completely redone, electrical, you know, things that have to be redone to make the cameras work because the technology is so much more modern and updated than when, you know, we first installed the systems that we have now. So it is like when you start a home project, there's a lot of complications that come up once you start working on something. But we, you know, we're very committed to getting anything that's a fire life and safety issue taken care of right away. And as we've been out visiting the schools, we have been seeing things and having the teams address them immediately. We're also revamping our work order system because we've, you know, been hearing people say, well, I had a work order in for a year. And we don't think that that should be the turnaround on our work order system. So there's different reasons why that's happening with the system. And we're also working on that.
I think we'll take one last question, if there is one.
Dr. Blanco, thank you so much for all of the work you've been doing. I've been seeing you everywhere, all over Pasadena. I would like some insight into when the board created a priority ranking system after the initial consultation came through where at some of our schools, we believed that we were going to be, you know, in the queue right away for Measure O funding. And I know one of the factors that they supposedly were waiting were who got Measure TT funds. And two of the schools that got the least Measure TT funds, Don Benito and San Rafael, are also in the most need according to the survey in terms of what our buildings needed. And some of the schools are getting things when we still don't have HVACs.
So I believe we were able to replace the HVAC in the office building, right? Because that system was easier to use without redoing the whole system. So in terms of the criteria, I think it was a little misleading because our architect was demonstrating to the board what it would look like when you selected criteria. And the criteria that was being used at that time was primarily the age of the buildings and condition of the buildings, right? Then our board had a conversation that was intended to say, this is what it looks like when you set criteria. It was not the criteria that the board had already selected. So when people publicly saw these different, you know, facilities rise to the top, it was a little bit misleading. Once the board talked about, you know, the different criteria that they really valued. And we had an open survey in the public that reordered, you know, some of the schools. So I know that that was very hard for some of the communities that thought that like, oh, I'm higher up on the list. But I did present a six-year plan to the board that is a potential of how we can space out the money over the next six years. And really, all of the schools will be getting something, right? And Don Benito is included in that in between. We're looking at making sure that we have enough money in maintenance and operations to be upkeeping the fire life and safety things and taking care of. We also get developer fees and using that money to upgrade the buildings and play structures, things that we can take care of in short-term projects that are more like 10 weeks or under 10 weeks. So we will be bringing that plan back for, you know, full approval to the board with a little bit more description in that. But if there is a school that has immediate, you know, fire, life, or safety need, definitely reach out to me, reach out to Mr. Carrasco, and we will try to address that right away.
Great. And we're going to have actually one last question and then we'll wrap up.
Good evening. Thank you, like it was mentioned, thank you so much, Dr. Blanco, for listening to the community. And I appreciate very much that last Sunday, we had a festival of the community schools at Madison. And the community is very happy. What I would like to mention is that just like, it's true that new programs and premium academic programs attract people. Our community on the northwest, Roosevelt Elementary and Madison Elementary, were deprived of any of these programs for decades, for previous administrations. Now, right now that things are being done differently, I would like for these children to be considered on top of the list, not only for their school. You know, it doesn't do the job to just have a brand-new building, but I think that they should also have a premium academic program at this, you know, at the areas with the highest density of schoolish children. So that's just something for the future to keep in mind.
Thank you. There, so I'd respond to that a little. I think it was about four years ago, we started a program called the Superintendent Student Success Zone, where we made sure that Washington Elementary, Madison, Elliott, and Octavia E. Butler had additional resources that other schools didn't have. When I was visiting Madison most recently, they do have a, you know, a wellness teacher, a data coach, an English learner coach, and, you know, regular instructional coach besides a community assistant and a community advocate. So we have really tried to make sure that the resources are there to support the teachers. They did mention to me, they asked me a question like, so why don't you think it's important for us to have the children that attend school here learn Spanish when we have the highest speaking Spanish population? So that's one of the areas that I was able to address right away with Dr. Hill. And through our expanded learning program, we're offering lots of cultural opportunities. And we're going to start offering the Spanish language. So we have folklorico and mariachi, you know, music there now. And so we do really want to have the community know that we value their culture and we want to help them preserve that. So that is like one of the experiences that we can change something right away, right? If we have the, you know, funding and the resources and we get input from the community about something that's important to them.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you.
One of the things I just wanted to share is Dr. Blanco talked about doing, like, working with people. Working with and not working for, not working to do something for other people, but really working with the community. And that's a really strong tenet of restorative practices. One of the things that we're working on together is to really work with each school, to have everyone within the school community work with each other. And so I was really inspired by that. And our hope is that this was a model of what we're doing both in school but also how we engage in community, sitting and talking and really building together. Not people high up building for people, everyone else, right? And so I just wanted to offer that this is also what we're kind of working to do and shift within our schools, within our communities. And your participation in that is really, really important. So just grateful for all of you to come out, grateful for our partnership and for you all to host this here. And thank you so much for everything you shared tonight.
Thank you.